It is 12 noon and today is Monday, August 8th, 2022. This is a meeting of the Akushnet Board of Selectmen, a joint meeting with the Soil Board. Call the order, uh, call the meeting to order.
Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please rise.
All right, uh, we have an appointment for a poll hearing. Is there a representative here from, uh, was it Verizon?
No, no, I, that's, I had left you an email in your packet there. Um, he gave some input as why he couldn't be here and he gave the input about, um...
So I've got to open this up as a hearing, is that right?
He should.
Okay. Call to, uh, call to order, uh, poll hearing for, uh, for Verizon and N-Star doing business at EverSource. Install one J-Pole on the east side of Main Street, which will be approximately 334, uh, was that feet?
Feet.
Southwesterly from the center line of Nate's Way, 15 feet easterly from the center line of Main Street, the pole will be installed in line within 49 feet north of the existing pole. Are there any folks here, any butters here? All right, there are none. Gentlemen, let's pleasure the board.
I seen the map, um, it does look like it is in, in line with the existing polls. I have no issues with it.
I agree. All right.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Close the, is there a motion to close the poll hearing?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, new business. September 6th, town election. Pam, is there anything you want to offer up?
Yeah, it's...
We have no podium.
It's, it's, uh, still been downstairs from when we had the little sending off ceremony for them.
Oh, okay. Um, this is just the, um, the warrant for the September 6th election. Um, we have been broken up into two different districts, um, for the, uh, the Senator and General Court. Um, we now have, I'm sorry, Rep. and General Court. We, um, now have them in precinct one and two A for one representative and precincts two and three for, um, another representative. Um, I did put down on the warrant, which is new this year, which states who's voting, what precincts are voting for what representative. Uh, they will get different ballots in precinct one and two A from, uh, two and three. Um, and, uh, just to let you also know, early voting has begun, vote by mail. Uh, we dropped, um, approximately 100 ballots for Democrats and Republicans last week, uh, for precincts one, two, and three. Uh, we didn't have any two As at that point. But, um, early voting will take place, um, in person beginning August 27th, uh, which is a Saturday. Um, and it will continue through Octo-, uh, September, September 2nd, which is a Friday, so it's a full week. Uh, we will only have it on the 27th, on the Saturday, um, and not the Sunday. Um, but then we'll have it regular business hours, um, the Monday through Friday.
Okay. Great. So motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, can I confer with the court for short 10 seconds?
Sure. Oh, yes, we do. Yes, thank you. Yes.
Such, uh, could we have approval subject to amendment where we have to enclose precinct two A?
At the top for the locations?
Okay.
Yep, I did neglect to put in the two A. Okay, so we will, I'll send new ones over to you.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, you, you have it identified on the precincts?
Right.
On the side?
I just want to...
But not at the top of the page?
Right.
That's okay. So we can just, uh, make a motion to approve the warrant with the amendment of adding section precinct two A to the top.
All right, is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, while we have the town clerk, can I ask a question before she...
Sure.
Yes.
The new voting machines?
Yes.
All right, I think we got them in and I think you're going to do a trial run?
We had scheduled for when, this, uh, this Wednesday, um, for the technician to come down, and unfortunately, he's unable to, so we have to put it to the week after.
So you're all set, and then hopefully we'll be all set.
Oh, yeah.
It's a state election, it's going to be a lot of people. We don't want to have to go through that, what our office had to go through?
Yes.
Um, with the voting machine, so I just want to make sure that everything's all set, calibrated, and good to go, and...
Yep.
If there's anything that you need, you need to contact Mr. Kelly and expedite whatever you need to make sure we're ready to go on September 6th, that's all.
Yep. I haven't let you down yet, have I?
No, you have not.
Okay.
No, you have not. Done a great job, I just want to make sure that, you know, you're all set.
Yeah.
Um, and if there's any hiccups and you need anything, to contact this office right away.
Oh, I will, I will.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly's been wonderful, he's been checking in with me periodically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just Pam, don't go too far. And we have a second call for town meeting, October 17th.
Your pleasure, Mr. Board, to, I have all set the fall town meeting on October 17th at 7:00 P.M.
Aye.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You will see in your, uh, handout the various dates.
Yep.
And, uh, we will be announcing that shortly. Uh, we've talked to the moderator, he's all set.
All right, next item is our building department. We have letters of resignation from Tyler Camboa, Miguel Severson, and Jim Merritt. And I understand they have, uh, taken these positions and moved on to brighter pastors in another community. Um, I think in particular, I hate to see Jim go, but in particular Tyler and Miguel is, uh, they were hardworking young men, and I think, you know, they were involved with, um, the library project, and we brought them on as full-time employees and have really done a great job on behalf of the town. I wish them well. Um, and so would that take, uh, I'd like to, uh, accept these letters of resignation with regret.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I, I couldn't agree more, I'm deeply saddened by Tyler and Miguel leaving. We were fortunate enough, I believe you and I were on the board that instituted that as school kids, we had them as co-op kids, um, provided them that opportunity to get some experience with us. They're just two great individuals in it, and I'm deeply saddened to see these two young men leave the town of Akushnet, albeit I think I anticipated somewhere down the road that they would, you know, leave for a brighter future doing something in their careers as young men, but, um, the two kids were very instrumental in helping me in many different ways, including the cock cruise night, um, so, just everything that they've done around here, so, um, I'll miss them, two young men.
All right. Mr. Ankle, motion?
I now got a chance to meet either of them, unfortunately, uh, they left a little early into my tenure, but I heard nothing but good things, so it's a loss for the town.
All right, is there a motion on the floor to accept the letters with regret?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So here's, so here's the deal, gentlemen, I'm just going to speak on behalf of myself, on the board, but we've got to have to do a gut check as, as a town. Um, you know, we've got, when we recognize good employees, I think we've got to really think long and hard about how we compensate them, how we treat them, um, how we promote them, or we can decide that the business model that we want as a community is to be a feeder system for other towns, and if that's, and that's what we want to go, if that's the direction we want to go in, that's fine too. Um, but we will have, constantly have turnover, um, but I think the board and Mr. Kelly, um, really got to be on top of things when we recognize talent, we've got to, um, reward it and cultivate it and nurture it, um, and I'm, I'm hoping that this will be the end of these, you know, especially people of the caliber of Tyler or Miguel, um, but, um, you know, I suspect we'll probably have more, and people have the right to move on to what they think is in their best interest, but, you know, at some point, I think, uh, as a town, we've got to really come up with a game plan, especially when it's regarding really good talent. There are some people that aren't top performers, and if they move on, that's fine too, but in this case here, I think we, um, we missed the mark, so, anyway, my thoughts. Next item for...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, this is an opportunity for the board to look at the organizational structure. You've got a building commissioner versus building inspector, facilities manager versus facilities foreman. Uh, how would the board want that recommendation and would have wanted by the next meeting?
I think that's fair. I mean, Mr. Kelly, you're, you're here day to day, I'd be more than happy to work with you on that and come up with a recommendation back to the board. You have a couple options, uh, on the menu?
I think we need to expedite, to be quite honest with you, when it comes to a building inspector. Mr. Merritt, we were fortunate enough to have Mr. Merritt be a building commissioner, was the first ever in the town of Akushnet. Um, we rewarded him through a stipend. I, I think we go back to the building inspector instead of trying to make something bigger than what it needs to be, and I think that the town right now needs a building inspector ASAP for all the outstanding permits, so right now I think it behooves not to move in the direction of just advertising for a building inspector, try to get somebody in here to cover that office, um, and help out anybody with outstanding permits, and then we'll discuss further from there, um, of the arrangement of how our employee structure's going to go. I, I do think it provides an opportunity, um, with the two young boys, maybe we go back to co-op, that could be a longer conversation, but we absolutely should be expediting somebody into that, um, building inspector's office. So I'm of the mindset of hiring a building inspector, keeping it, keeping it the way it used to be. Mr. Merritt was our only, um, commissioner. With that said, we were always successful in the past with, um, building inspectors, so I would revert back to that model for right now.
Would the, would the board want also to have me explore if we can get someone in as an interim?
I, I, I was about to ask that question, um, I think in the short term, you can check with some of the surrounding towns to see if there's somebody who can fill that void, you know, to borrow, right?
Actually, the number of the surrounding towns are also advertising.
Here we go, here we have it.
But there are one or two people in town that I could contact, and, uh, there's, uh, one or two, a little far away, but live in the area that might...
Okay.
Be able to do it.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll come back, uh, I'll work with you on that, we'll come back with a recommendation. Yeah? All right, next item.
Are we, are we gonna, even though we're going to advertise, are we going to go for the interim thing just on a short-term basis, but I think we just had a discussion on that to move forward with a building inspector?
But we didn't, Mr. Gaspere, we didn't decide on that? Um, you, you brought that up as a, as a possible solution, and I think the way we left it is I'm going to work with Mr. Kelly and come back to the board.
You offered that as, as a recommendation as well, and I offered a recommendation as well, so I guess we'll wait and see, Mr. Ankle, he's got anything to say on that?
I think we need to build an inspector as quick as possible, so at this point, how, we don't have a list of how many open permits there are in front of us, I mean, if there's a significant amount, we can't really hold that up, so...
I, I...
Rather not go through like...
I think interim would probably be best for, because you're not going to get an interim building commissioner. You would possibly get an interim building inspector because the qualifications and the, uh, state certifications for commissioner are much higher. You can get someone who's got a construction license.
I don't disagree, and I think...
You're just running parallel, you're, you're, you're doing an interim, you're looking for somebody to come in right away and expedite and fill in for those permits, and then you're also doing an advertisement. If you sit, sit around and wait too long, to try to find an interim, that office is vacated, you could be running two things parallel to each other at the same time.
That's, that's what I said.
Build an inspector, be done with it. Again, you don't have to make this, uh, rocket science, it's, uh, building inspectors work for the town of Akushnet, we have a working foreman that was in there for the maintenance and the ASME union, whether it's going to be two more high school kids, whatever it may be, um, that might be the best interest, we can explore that option too, I just think that we need a building inspector ASAP, um, and running an advertisement and waiting for it, for resumes to come in, and doing that, you're talking 30, 45, 60 days out. Um, the longer you wait, the further out you push that deadline, and the bigger disruption you cause in the community, so I'm, I'm, I'm in the mindset is advertise for a building inspector and move this thing forward. That's where I'm at. I think it's important.
I think that's what we just said.
No, you said you wanted to explore more options with Mr. Kelly on whether or not we're going to create a...
I didn't say that.
...facilities manager and changing titles and doing whatever we're doing.
Never said that, never said that. Here's what I said, Mr. Kelly offered up an interim as chair, I said I'd be more than happy to work with, with him on that. What you're saying, Kevin, I don't disregard, okay? We just, we said the exact same thing.
So we're going to go right out right now, have Mr. Kelly do a proposal, write up an ad for a building inspector, and put it out on MMA and start advertising for a building inspector?
No, we're going to look for, Mr. Kelly proposed that we look for an interim to fill the void because he potentially has two candidates in town to serve as interim while we go look for either a building inspector, as a building inspector. What I was suggesting is, do we look at a building inspector with two, you know, two, uh, two young people like we hired? We could look at the department and see how we want to restructure it, or, or structure it at all. We may not want to go with two people like we had. We're saying the same thing, Mr. Kelly put on the table that we look at an interim.
I mean, making a phone call the next day or two to see if we could have someone fill in, whether it's from another town or, uh...
You, you can do that, uh, my point is, you can absolutely do that, and I'm in agreement with that, I'm not going to wait 30 or 45 days for a building inspector and try to go through the interview process to find one, I think we need to run it parallel. Bring in somebody that you're suggested to and put out an advertisement ASAP for a building inspector, and then we have dialogue on how we want to structure, whether we're going to bring in more, but let's get the advertisement out ASAP instead of filling these positions with these interim people all the time. I, I don't think that's working out in the, in the best interest, in some situations it is, other situations it ain't, there's a lot of people with outstanding permits, and I don't want to be the one responsible for opening up people from getting into their homes that they're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Kevin, I, I have no problem advertising for a building inspector. What Mr. Kelly put on the table is looking for an interim, and I offered as chairman to say I'll work with Mr. Kelly on that and report back to the board.
Okay, so we advertise it for a building inspector?
If that's what you want, that's fine, absolutely. Nobody, nobody...
Well, that's the motion, and I'll make a motion to advertise for a building inspector, and also explore the interim with the chairman, Mr. Kelly.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think we said the same thing, it's just...
I just, I just want to make sure it's clear because sometimes messages aren't clear to the public, and I've already heard a lot about building permits going on in this town, and what are we going to do, and how's that going to work out, and it's, it's, there's a bigger problem lying out there, that's all I'm saying.
Of course.
And I've talked to many of these people that have that concern with that building department.
Well, the thing is, we currently have, if there's a backlog of building permits now, where things aren't getting serviced, then we have somebody in that position who's now leaving.
Right, yeah, so, Mr. Kelly, what happened, because I remember Mr. Merritt, I believe that we might have did an appointment too, to like an assistant, um, building inspector or something like that, the name is out there, I believe the individual's from Lakeville as well, have we, can you make a phone call and see if there's anything? I mean, if he's the assistant building inspector, he could be coming in.
I've talked to him, and he said his schedule is so packed that if there is an emergency inspection that needs to be done, he's available, but he advised us that, uh, he's also filling in another town.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there.
Like Mr. Merritt was filling in at Fairhaven.
Okay, just throwing it out there, all options on the table at this point.
So we've got it covered for an emergency, but for anything else, I've got a couple names I could call, I'll call it tomorrow.
That's fine, that's fine, the sooner the better.
Call them all. All right, so motion to, we have before us Lions Club Special One-Day Liquor License, Saturday, September 10th, September 11th, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the apple peach.
So I'll, I would, and the signatures are there, and, um, Mr. Brown and all that, and everybody signed off, and it's actually a two-day, right? So they're doing, one says for September 11th, and then the next one is for September, well, it's September 10th, a little bit back, it's in the book, but it's a two-day liquor license, all alcoholic beverages, so I'll make a motion to approve both, Mr. Chairman, for September 11th, 2022, and for September 10th, 2022.
We will also have, um, the liquor license, um, insurance in pol-, in place, I already did speak to, um, Mr. Brown and the insurance company, and she's going to send that over to us, um, so we made them, everybody signed off, with one please do two.
Motion on the floor, the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next item. We've got vacancies for the Planning Commissioner, uh, Planning Board, which is Mr. Cinerizio.
And the Board of Assessors, both are joint...
We have two, two vacancies on the planning, right? We've got, uh, is this Cinerizio or Phil Millen?
No, I know she did, that was really Mr. Chairman inside the letter, but it was a bit confusing, I, I don't, I don't believe so, because Matt Marc Francois filled the void on the Phil Millen, um, position. I believe that to be the case, so it's a bit confusing, the letter, I seen that myself, it was a bit confusing.
So it looks like for Marc Cinerizio, there's a gentleman, Peter Giampa, I don't, for this appointment, it'd make sense to bring him in for a future meeting to, uh...
You have to do a, it's a joint meeting appointment with the Planning Board.
Peter Weg.
So you have to schedule that meeting.
Yep, Peter Weg, he should come in, present his, uh, background.
That's Mr. Kelly, I make a motion now, Mr. Kelly arrange, um, some dates for the joint meetings for the Board of Assessors and the Planning Board, and also the Housing Authority, because there is a tenant, um, that's interested in being appointed, and that's something that's on there.
Can we do those? We got like a bunch of them, right? We've got planning, we've got housing authority...
And assessors are all joint meetings.
So we can just do separate, just go one down the line?
I don't believe the housing, um, has to come in, I think it's just the board appointing, as far as I read it, if I read it right.
So let's just do this before we get ahead of ourselves, if we can just deal with the Planning Commissioner, so there's a motion on the floor to direct Mr. Kelly to set up a meeting with the Planning Board to do a joint meeting to interview Mr. Giampa.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. There is also a vacancy on the Board of Assessors, if we can get a motion to have Mr. Kelly set up a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors to bring in Mr. Brown and Mr. Peckham, uh, to present themselves, uh, before both boards. Even though, I'd like to get, you know, it should be a joint meeting, whether it's required or not, so, it is, the assessors, it is.
Yep.
That's what we're asking. There's a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, now we can get to the Housing, the Housing Authority. There is one, all right, it's one person who's, sort of in interest, Carol Silver?
That is correct, it's for a tenant.
Yep.
Has to be a tenant of the Housing Authority, and now we have a name presented before us.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board? Do you want to bring her in, or do you want to just make the appointment?
Just for the IHA.
It's local housing authority?
Yeah.
There's one for Jerome Smith?
I was going to say, there is one more.
There's two people?
Yep. Jerome Smith.
Even though it doesn't require, if that's what the new state law is, because I know Pam provided some information from the governors that things were changed, even if it doesn't require the Housing Authority as a joint meeting, it would be nice to contact Lynn, the director at the Housing Authority, um, and maybe they, the Housing Authority themselves, they can have a vote on who they would recommend for that position, seeing how it does, it has impacted them. So it'd be nice if you have two different names, if you only had one name, it's easy, if you have two or three or four, um, I would, I would ask for the input from the, uh, local housing authority and continue that same path, um, even though people are changing laws, we don't need to involve certain people.
I agree, I think they, they, they should have a say in who's got some board again.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Do you want them to just screen the candidate and just get back to us with their name, rather than drag them in? They can do it at their meeting on site.
Recommendation would be nice, I don't, I mean, if you have that, and, you know, whatever it may be, and then we could, we could do our own due diligence and speak with, um, Lynn, the director, um, and get some input on who the two residents are, and try to come to our own conclusion on who we see best fit, but...
Okay, so is there a motion to ask Ms. Leonard to contact Lynn at the Housing Authority to get their, um, recommendation on candidates?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So next we've got Historical Commission, Laurie Bates, expressed an interest. He's actually served before, he was a member, he's served in the past, and, uh, any questions or concerns about Laurie Bates?
No, motion to appoint Laurie Bates to the Historical Commission.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, CBA, Randall DeTerra. 54 years old, lived in Akushnet most of my life, has been employed by Verizon for the last 24 years, my current office is in Middleborough, I have a four-year college degree in tech communications, am familiar with the zoning board appeals procedures, and I'm interested in serving on the board. Do you want to, do you want to bring him in, or does he stand on it?
That was kind of my thinking on that one, that's why I kind of gave these out to you, so that, um, you know, the zoning board is a little more involved than like the Historical Committee.
All right, gentlemen, do you want to bring him in for an interview?
That's the pleasure of the, of the board, I have no problems waiting on these appointments.
Yeah, I'd be all right with that.
Okay. Motion to invite Mr. DeTerra in to serve, uh, to, uh, for an interview.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion, the second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next is Community Preservation, Jesse Ellis. Kathy Murray. How many vacancies we have, Lisa, or CPC?
Off the top of my head, we definitely have a few, um, resident ones, and we also have the golf, under-golf committee.
We have an interest letter of interest from Mr. Avery, who's, I know.
You've got two citizens vacancies, as I understand, and then one from housing.
Yes.
Well, I happen, Mr. Ellis, I, I don't have anything, Mr. Avery is from the, the golf committee, and it says, she, she checked it off, it said under-golf, so if it's required that we need somebody from golf on C...
It's not required, but it would be advisable, uh, since, uh, they are, uh, similar to Parks Recreation, uh, you've got someone from Parks now, but it would, uh, be good for that committee to have input from the golf advisory committee, because some of the CPC funds potentially could be referred to them.
Okay. That's tricky, because that's an enterprise fund.
So, would it be better to expand?
Why would you strike under-golf? If he wants to serve...
If we have free, if we have free openings, two citizens, we could do all three of these right now, Mr. Chairman.
We've got two citizens and housing.
Sorry?
Two citizens and housing.
One needs to be from the housing committee, authority.
Do we have to choose two out of three?
Unless, uh, one of the three is nomination of the... Unless one of the three is nomination of the housing authority. They have to refer to you, because one of the major categories in CPC is generally housing, so.
They don't, it's not like they have to vote on.
They don't technically have to be from housing. I don't think we've ever had that, it's just.
Let's just do this for the sake, I'm, for the sake of like red tape, appoint somebody as the housing representative, it's not like they're going to be voting on housing stuff all the time, so. So motion to appoint Ellis, Murray, and Aberay.
I make a motion to appoint Jesse Ellis, he was the first one in, Kathy Murray, and Mr. John Aberay to CPC.
I'll second.
All in favor?
That's all, so.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item. Mr. Kelly, we've got, thank you to Mark Cinerizio, we've got a letter to thank him for all his time of service. See that on the agenda? Did we do that? I probably did that the last meeting, I think so.
You thanked him, do you want a official document?
Sure. Except whatever the pleasure of the board would like to do.
I think you spent a lot of time in this town, or a lot of different boards, and did a lot of good for the town, so I don't think it would be a bad idea.
I think it would be rather nice to make a nice citation and present it to Mr. Cinerizio.
It's going to be, I understand they're scheduling an event, so something that could be given at that event.
All right. Mr. Gasper, this is your, your deal, car show.
So unfortunately, I regret to tell our public and this board that we will not be having a cruise night on August twenty-fifth this year. Matt Lopes has contacted me, he's finally got some dialogue with a knee surgeon after COVID, waiting for everything, and his knee's gone terribly worse, so for him to be able to be doing all the running around in that day takes a lot of work and effort, and there's no way that I could pull this off without Mr. Lopes, and his family are the ones that really started this back in two thousand and ten in the town's one hundred and fiftieth birthday, so know what I want to do without Mr. Lopes. We've been doing it side by side since two thousand and ten, so he just, he just can't take it and tolerate it, so unfortunately, we will not be having cruise night this year.
Okay. It's unfortunate, but I guess, you know, in the future, I know there's been some feedback, it's an awesome, awesome event, and it's great that it's in the center of town, but maybe, you know, if it makes it easier on folks, maybe it's at ballpark or at the school.
I'm going to discuss that with Mr. Lopes on relocation and see what the sentiment is of, of those folks, but it's absolutely something that we should be reconsidering. It's a great event in the center of the town and doesn't hamper too much, but, you know, we do have a new business over there now, so be it, that's not going to hamper what the town events are, I understand that, but it does, you know, when I sit back and look at it, it might make more sense to relocate, you know, you know, a more, less stressful atmosphere.
Right, all right.
So it is something that we will explore.
Excellent. Okay. Mr. Kelly, time administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, since we're running a little late and it's very extensive because of the fact of the summer meeting schedule, that if board members have questions, we can clarify all that and then go forward with this or another report in the next meeting.
It stands on its own, it's, it's extensive, you can tell, you've got a lot going on. I'm just going to say this, Mr. Kelly, your main priority, it's, it's amazing the amount of work that you are continuing to turn out, but your main priority for us and this board was to get our financial house in order through July one, and I think you've done that. Unfortunately, the previous administrations left things in shambles, and it's not just within the last year or two, I think it's been a culminating thing, and so for that, thank you very much, there may be some, you know, I'm getting whispers of some folks that there's a little bit of discontent at certain things, this is a reflection on you, but some of the things that we care about that this board or we haven't been paying attention to, and that's justified, but the fact remains is, Mr. Kelly had a job to do, which is to get our financial house in order, and I think we're getting there, we're putting the structure in place, and now hopefully we'll now have the time and the bandwidth to start looking at those nice-to-have things, okay, and those quality of life issues, but getting the finances squared away was job number one, so anyway, thank you for that. Thank you. All right. Next meeting, August twenty-third, four P. M. Does anybody have anything that they want to offer up, either under announcements or from the board of selectmen?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, we will be going into executive session, executive session under general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-eight, subsection A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation civil rights, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and the chair still declares review of matters presented, votes may be taken. We will not be going into, we will not be reconvening, so is there a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
Mr. Hinkley?
Yes.
And I'm yes. We're now in executive session.